And I'm going to call the meeting to order. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 1, 2025, meeting of the Westport Select Board. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, this meeting is being recorded. I don't have a lot in the terms of welcome comments. We do have, our next meeting will be on two weeks from today, on December 15. That'll be our last meeting of the year, I think. We're not having a meeting on 29th yet. So December 15 will be our last meeting of the year. I just want to remind everyone that on Sunday, December 7, the Westport Recreation and I don't think the Land Conservation Trust are having the Tree Lighting Event, so at Westport Woods. So on Sunday, December 7, from 3:00 to 5:00 at Westport Woods, it's a great event. The police is usually there, the fire department's there, it's a good time. Is there anything else before we start?
That's it.
Okay. The first item that we have on agenda is from Police Chief Christopher Dunn to present some awards.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Have a great and nice Thanksgiving.
Didn't.
Thank you.
Same for you.
So through the year, we look to see if we can nominate certain officers for the things that they've done throughout the year. So it's my pleasure to present Detective Michelle Donovan to the Westport Select Board tonight as a recipient of the Community Service Award. This nomination submitted by Sergeant Fernando Gonzo, unanimously approved by the Westport Police Combination Awards Committee, recognizes Detective Donovan's exceptional dedication and personal commitment to our community. Detective Donovan consistently donates her own time at no cost to the town by participating in numerous events that strengthen the bond between the police department and the public. Her efforts reflect beyond Westport, reflecting her genuine passion for service and community engagement. Detective Donovan is a role model for her peers and truly embodies the spirit of public service. It's an honor to recognize her in this well-deserved award. So just to break down the award, she constantly donates, I guess, donates her own time for different organizations within our community by representing our department. Touch a Truck, National Night Out, is something that she's consistently done throughout the years, and I felt this award was warranted, and I appreciate the nomination by Sergeant Gonzo. So without further ado, Detective Donovan.
Do you want to do them both at the same time?
It's for the pleasure of you.
Let's do that way you want to get them. I'll stand up for pictures, if you don't mind. Then we'll get for pictures and they'll be easier.
So just as much with Detective Donovan donating time, volunteering time to the community, the same goes for Officer Sean Munzing. So it's my pleasure to present Officer Sean Munzing to the Westport Select Board as a recipient of the Community Service Award. This nomination submitted by Officer Sergeant Fernando Gonzo, unanimously approved by the Westport Police Combination Awards Committee, recognizes Officer Munzing's exceptional dedication and personal commitment to our community. Officer Munzing consistently donates his own time at no cost to town, participating in numerous events that strengthen the bond between the police department and the public. His efforts extend beyond Westport, reflecting his genuine passion for service and community engagement. Officer Munzing is a role model to his peers and truly embodies the spirit of public service. It's an honor to recognize him with his well-deserved event. Just as much as Detective Donovan, Officer Munzing goes to just as many events within town volunteering his own time. So it's my pleasure. To the other Officer Sean Munzing.
I should have asked, I should have asked if you wanted to say anything. Did you want to say anything? No?
No.
No, okay.
Like most police officers, we don't like to, yeah, we tend to speak a lot.
All right, and you have one more.
I do. So this is the Chief's combination, and this is something very touching to me. Officer Dave Simko is a recipient of the Chief's combination for his continued dedication, selfless service to the Westport Police Department following his retirement. His willingness to assist around the station, support officers, and contribute to daily operations reflect the highest standards of commitment and professionalism. Officer Simko's ongoing involvement reminds us to value the honors, value, honor, integrity, and service do not end with retirement. They live on the strength of his example and leadership. The men and women of the department extend their sincere appreciation for his time and generosity and waiving support for our mission, our community. I'm sure everybody here knows Officer Simko. He's been here for quite some time. He helps myself and Deputy Rebel quite a bit around the station. Recently, we had the lightning strike, and he took the lead, which was huge for us. He pretty much said, "I have it." So we have a snowstorm, he's there. We have a heating problem, he's there. We have an AC problem, he's always there. He's always, we can always count on him to be there. And I thought it was very, something we should do to honor him for his continued support for our department and our town. So it's Officer David Simko.
So I know I joined the whole board in saying, "Thank you for your service to our community. Thank you for the work that you do," and I'm really glad that you're getting some recognition for it.
Yes.
Does anybody want to say anything before we?
Congratulations for the fine work.
So we have some pins.
Yes, combination pins.
So when I gather for pictures, so it's very full room. I guess maybe right here. So let's, Board, join me. Let's squeeze in. I don't know.
You can grab one.
Definitely a joke in the center.
Sure.
It's not a great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's like a reverse selfie.
You guys, welcome to stay. This is a public meeting, but I appreciate if you want to. Just don't talk.
You guys want to?
I think my favorite.
Did you have anything else?
So just a few things, if I have a moment.
Yeah.
I'm glad to say we had uneventful Thanksgiving. We hear of the tragedies that go on for Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving weekend. Our town was uneventful, which is always great to hear, great to say. Just a few things, through Detective Donovan, the Women's Shelter Drive for clothing for women's kids, makeup gift cards, arts and crafts and supplies, they end on December 19th. We have a box in the foyer of the police department. If they make, come and make a donation, that would be great. Along with, again, with Detective Donovan, the food drive that we have, where all the proceeds go to the Westport Food Pantry for perishable items, that ends this week. Our school resources are hard at work. SRO Pachico is holding an event at the end of the month for stuffed animals to hand out to children at the MAC. SRO Davis is working with the schools to assist with presents for some students. We do have a graduation coming up, January 16th, for two of our recruits to enter the field training process for 12 weeks after that. And just then, one thing I want to make sure, that we can get out there with the holidays arriving with the postal service, FedEx, UPS, people drop off their stuff in the front. I just want to make sure people are aware and diligent of retrieving their items before somebody drives by and takes them. And if they do, by all means, please give us a call. And if there's any suspicious vehicles that they think might be in the neighborhood, to also give us a call when it comes to that.
All right, thank you.
And that's all we have to report for the police department.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, a discussion with the assessors and vote for the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2026. It should be 2026 or 2027?
Twenty-six, right?
Okay. Hi, Steve, welcome.
How are you doing? Steve Maderis, Chairman of the Board of the Westport Assessors. We come to you tonight as a board to, this classification here, and if you'd open up your packet, you'll see that not a lot of changes happened in the classes of what we have. All the real and personal property is about 6.9%, 6.9%. The average single-family home went up about 5%. The Agrix Tax Bill went up around 3%. Our tax rate, because of the higher values, has gone from 745, will be 728 this year. The values go up a little bit, the rate generally goes down. The levy went up about $1.8 million, I guess, about four and a half percent, the levy went up. New growth was down quite a bit. It was down almost 17%. If you looked around town, a little less houses were built this year than has been in the past. So we lost about $90,000, $90,000 in new growth. So the percentages have kind of stayed about the same. If you go to the next page, you will see that the residential makes up 92% of our tax base, okay? The CIP, which is the commercial industrial, personal property, commercial, industrial, and personal property, is only 8%. So if, if the people don't understand what we're here for today, you can take and shift the burden onto the other classes other than the residential, and you can do a shift of up to 1.5%. If you look at that handout, if you looked up there, if we did do the shifts, if you looked at it, let's see, it would shift it to like 6.9% for the residential, but the commercial would jump up to like 10.89% if you went all the way. And to put that in dollars, you know, it would make a big, big difference on the commercial and the industrial and the personal property, and really not that, that much change with the average single-family home. If you look at the trends of, on the next page, if you look at the trends of where our values of homes have gone from, we start on that block at 217. You'll see the value of the average home, single-family home is around $400,000. In 2026, that number is $677,400. So, I mean, there's a jump of $270,000 in, what, six years? You know? Some interesting facts on those. The amount of sales that we're using, which would be 23, 24, and 25 sales, which would be at our base of 204 sales in this town, out of them, the average sale was $765,000 on the houses that have been sold in this town in the last few years. Another interesting fact we came across, in 2020, five years ago, the percentage of the houses in this town that were valued, single-family homes now, the percentage of the single-family homes in this town that were over $1 million were 4.9%. In 2026, what do you think the percentage of houses over $1 million are in a five-year period? It's now 13.4%. So that went up about 300%. The houses that are valued over $1 million, single-family homes now. So there it is. The average home now is worth about $765,000. Therefore, with the value going up, the rate did come down a little bit. It'll be coming down from 745 to 728. If you look on the next page, it shows the RCP, the residential and the CIP factors. If you take a look at what the rate is now, if we go with a value of one, it would be $7.28. The average single-family tax bill would be $4,900. If we were to shift that burden to the 1.5, the full we could do on the CIP, it would bring it down to 697, and it would bring it down like $4,721. So just about a $200 savings for every taxpayer. Now, if you own commercial industrial property, your average bill now is about $5,600, that would jump to $8,400. You know, the difference of $2,800. So residents would save about 200 bucks, but the people that own the industrial or commercial property, their bill would jump about $2,800, just because there's only 8% of them and there's 92% of the residential. So we feel where we are in other towns in our, you know, our size, that have that, those kind of percentages, stay with a single rate, we think we should go with a factor of one. We're unanimously agreed on that. If you wanted to look, on the last page is basically, you know, shows what the maximum levy has gone up, new growth has gone down a little bit, and, you know, bringing all those factors together, we just feel we should stay with a single tax rate. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I think you laid it out very nicely. So I know a lot of people have a hard time understanding that just because your valuation goes up, the town isn't getting significantly more money. It's the total levy.
Right, exactly. It's all based on what the levy is.
Right.
And the levy, I mean, I don't think we've not used two and a half percent since the establishment of two and a half. So the levy can go up to a maximum of two and a half percent, plus any debt exclusions and/or levy, you know, overrides that go through.
And then the action you're looking for us today is to vote to keep the local tax levy at a factor of one. That's the?
Treat all the classes the same.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any?
I'll put that in the form of a motion to accept the assessor's recommendation to have the local tax levy at a factor of one.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Did you have? I just had a question.
Mm-hmm.
And you may not know this, or, you know, you may not have the data. And this is just for my own edification. What, do we have a percentage of full-time residents versus seasonal residents here in town?
Theo knows that number at the top of her head.
Well, we don't yet. Only because...
Sorry, Theo, can you go to a mic, please? Thank you.
Well, I couldn't, at this time, we couldn't really give you an accurate number, only because we are still researching, what the full-time residents who actually lives at the property that they actually own versus just, you know, maybe their second home. In order to do that, we have to research all the deeds, make sure that that is the property that's where they live. But my guess would be around, probably about 60% maybe, based on what we have so far.
And I know there are other municipalities or local cities and towns in Massachusetts and other areas that do it, different tax rates. Is that something that you would look at with respect to?
As far as doing the shift to the CIP, you're saying?
Or shift to full-time versus part-time residents?
Yeah. How I personally feel on that, and this isn't the board, this is how I feel about that. People that are coming here in summer homes, basically, they're water-influenced, they're the point, they're the harbor, they're on the ponds, they're paying a higher value on those properties already. So they're getting the biggest tax bills as it is. When something in this town goes down, they don't live here, they don't have the right to vote on that. You know, so if something goes in that's going to cost them money, they're the higher taxpayer, but they don't have any vote on that. I mean, to go back what this country was built on, taxation without representation. So I don't feel, you know, a residential exemption would do any good for this town. There have been some towns that went to it, and it turned into a nightmare, and they came back to it. I know it's been kicked around with, you know, various people talking about a residential exemption, but, like I say, based on how I feel, not the board, that's how I feel about it.
Just an argument to that, lodging taxes and occupancy tax of hotels, that's, you can also say that's taxation without representation. Just to clarify.
That's a separate, that's a separate issue.
Anything else from the board? This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments? Seeing none, so we have a motion in a second to, to set the local tax levy at, for fiscal year 26 at one. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else that we need to know about?
Just as a board and as myself, I'd like to thank Jim for his service here. I know he'll be leaving soon. I've been serving on boards in this town for over 30 years, and I can easily say he's the best town administrator we've ever had by far, and you'll be sadly missed. Thank you for the job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, assessors. And Theo. The next item we have on agenda is a petition from Massachusetts Electric doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., to relocate one pole jointly owned on Tickle Road and Robert Street. Also, permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways. So I think we have a representative here from National Grid. Welcome. Can you just introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Roy, representing National Grid at 1250 Brayton Point Road in Somerset. This first, first location, it was one of two.
Just one second.
Sure.
Hey, Steve.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so this first location of two is an existing pole 54, which is the first pole on the east side of Tickle Road, coming from Route 177. We're requesting to relocate that, that pole approximately 46 feet, 45, 46 feet north of its existing location. This, this project, both, both poles in this petition hearing are due to the rotary proposal at the intersection of 177 and Tickle Road, Robert Street. The second location, I don't know if you wanted to introduce that one. I think you just introduced the first one at Tickle Road, but there is a second one at Robert Street. Yeah, right. So the second picture to the right, pole, pole one, which is a new, a new jointly-owned pole set that we're requesting, also due to the proposal of the rotary, we're just rerouting our overhead lines from, would be the east side to the west side of Robert Street, would be coming diagonally across that, that piece of property on the southwest corner to feed our existing pole two. So we'd hit from pole seven directly in line to the new pole one to pole, to the existing pole two. Again, rerouting our overhead lines in this construction progress, so.
So I'm just going to summarize, you're shifting the poles.
Yes, exactly right.
To move farther back away from the intersection of 177.
Absolutely. So to kind of give you a bigger picture here, right now, the existing pole line that comes down Route 177 is on the north side of Route 177, coming from Sodom Road down the hill. This project is relocating, there's two, let me back up, there's two parts of this project. There's the town, the town pole relocations, which are the two poles I just discussed. The other part is the DOT project, which is the relocating of overhead lines on 177 themselves. The pole, existing pole line is moving from the north side of 177 to the south side, and as we make our way towards the rotary, we're just rerouting our overhead wires to these new pole locations.
All right, thank you. Craig, did you have something?
So I would assume that these two are, unless there's some serious objections, we would want to pass them as a single item because?
Yeah, they were listed on the, on the agenda as one.
Okay, good. I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Anything from the board? This is a public hearing, is there any public comment?
Yeah, we'll talk to the...
You need to go to the microphone. Just need to say your name and then...
Hi, Michelle Cardy. I live at 407 Tickle Road on the corner of Tickle and 177. Could you please explain to me what this is going to mean specifically for my property and my bushes, and how I will be interrupted for getting in and out of my driveway and to work, et cetera?
I can't go into too much detail because I'm just here representing National Grid for the two pole locations that I discussed, but as, as a whole, for this DOT project...
Well, just limit yourself to the poles.
Sure.
You're moving a pole on her, that's currently on her, or abutting her property.
Yep.
Yes, we are.
To another location abutting her property.
Yeah. The first pole on Tickle Road is actually on the opposite side of her driveway, but like I said, there was two parts of this project. There's the DOT project, which would be more focused to her property. We got special permitting to relocate these, the poles on Route 177 and at the intersection themselves. But I can't say that there is, because the pole line is shifting closer towards her property, the road will also be pushing into her property as well. I can't speak into too much detail because that is a DOT project. I can't speak on the DOT's behalf, but it will, from Tickle Road, it'll, from the maps I see, it'll push onto her property approximately 20 feet. And I guess further from the 177 curbing as well. That, I mean, I, like I said, I can't, I can't speak into too much, too much of that. I'm just here representing National Grid.
The, the two poles though, so we're only, we can't authorize you to put these poles on private property. We can only authorize you to put them within the town.
Yes, that's correct.
Right-of-way. And so the, this is, is the proposed layout for the new location within the public right-of-way?
Yes.
In the public roadway.
Yes, they are.
So it's not located on her property?
No.
So, but there might be impacts to the property other than the moving of these poles?
That's, that's correct.
Is what you're...
That's correct, and it's more of the roadway than our pole lines. So the intersection, because they're putting up rotary, they're pushing.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not before us.
No, right, exactly right. And I think that's what she's asking. I think, how, how will this project affect her property? And it will affect her property, just not in the retrospect of, of these poles themselves, you know? So it's more of a question to the DOT that she should ask this to than to this hearing.
But the pole itself is...
The pole itself, no.
Okay. Did you want, did you have more?
So you're saying the pole itself is not going on my property?
That's, that's correct, yes.
But the digging to put wires underground is going on or under my property to get to it?
No, no, there will be no underground, underground lines. All these lines are overhead with utility poles, so everything you'll see will just be overhead. At least in the National Grid. I'm sure there's, there's other utilities that are digging, like sewer, gas.
Well, right now, we're only talking about these poles and the lateral cables and wires, right?
Yes.
That's all we're talking about.
Yep.
So, no, there's no digging related to that on your property, is what I just heard.
So the overhead lines, as they move, will now be going in a different way over my property?
Yes, but it's tough to say because, like I said, the intersection is widening, the poles are, are moving back on, onto your, I don't know exactly how far onto the property, if it is on the property. I don't know where the property lines are. But in this, in this sketch, I, like I said, I don't want to...
Well, we're only talking about a very limited scope.
Right. It's very tough to ask these...
We're talking about a very limited scope. What you're asking us to authorize is the moving of these poles from town property to town property.
Yes.
We are not authorizing any work on private property.
No.
But I thought you just said the pole is going on my property after you previously said it wasn't. When you just started talking again, you just said the pole is moving into the property.
I don't know where the property lines are. I can't, I know it's pushing off the road.
I don't know how you can answer it if you don't know where the property lines are, if you can...
Well, he's not author, we can't, we can't authorize work on private property. We can only authorize the work in the public roadway, right? Now, it's possible that it's public roadway that looks a lot like your property, like I know my yard looks like it's private.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Has the DOT, or Mass DOT, reached out to you in any, in any way?
No, I reached out to them and I received some information, but there is nothing that is telling me specifically how much, exactly, I mean, I have now seen plans because I reached out and I asked for them, but it still doesn't say, how does this impact my property? And is there going to be a fence? Is there going to be anything that protects me when a car goes through the ice on a rotary that would have been going straight through and hits ice and goes straight into my house?
So those are valid concerns, but not before us right now. Go ahead, man.
I think, yeah, like you're basically for pre-construction, and it's kind of something you've got to get out of the way. I mean, are they ready to start this in the spring or something, Jim? I've been out of the loop a little bit.
I don't see it being done this year. We're on the tip, I think, for 27.
But, so, because I remember when we got, well, power engineering was doing the design on this stuff, right?
They still are, yeah.
And then back and forth a couple of times, they had survey out there and everything. I thought I heard something about land takings and...
There'll be some easement takings, there could possibly be some land takings as well.
And I'm just finding out, one of the residents, we've been in this for a couple of years?
Yep.
You, you had to reach out?
Yeah, yeah. Apparently, because I bought the property, we brought, my husband and I bought the property in June 2022, there may or may not have been communications to a prior owner, but none, none came to me until I heard about it in a meeting.
I think this has been designed for like four years, five years?
There's been a lot, there's been a lot of hearings and steps. I have a question. Is there urgency? Like, why is this coming, why is the pole location moving, coming to us before the rest of the project? Is there a rationale for that?
I, I believe this is at a 75%. So the state goes through like three stages of their projects.
bought the property in June 2022, there may or may not have been communications to a prior owner, but none came to me until I heard about it in a meeting.
I think this has been designed for like four years, five years?
There's been a lot of hearings and steps. I have a question, is there urgency? Like, why is this coming, why is the pole location moving, coming to us before the rest of the project? Is there a rationale for that?
I believe this is at a 75%. So the state goes through like three stages of their projects, like pre-designed, then a 25, then a 75, then a 100. Right now, the 75, I'm holding the 75% plan, and I believe it was just submitted for the 100% plan. So they're at the end stages of the design. So I don't believe I'm in like the beginning. I feel like we've been in this, like I said, I'm just a representative, I didn't design this project. I just, I was asked to come here tonight just to speak on behalf of these pole relocations. I feel like, like I said, the 100% design was submitted to DOT, and I believe that's where it stands right now, so.
And I think, just to make clarification on that, normally what happens, because I do a lot of this type of work, we want to get that in place so that they're not stuck with starting construction. You ever see it in the poles sitting out in the middle of the road because these guys are tough to get a hold of? So I think they're just trying to get their ducks in a row, but, I mean, you probably should get in touch with the town administrator on how that project's going along, because we have been working on it for years.
So to be clear, it's not a town project, it's Department of Transportation, it's a state project, so.
I mean, the former chief is the one that put it forward. It was a project that the town put forward.
I'm not saying we're not involved, I'm just saying it's not our project, so.
To make it clear, if you don't mind, I did actually in August send a letter of concern to the DOT, questions, and I was told that it came to the select board, and I haven't heard back from either since. So I would appreciate it.
My understanding was the engineering company, Power, had been given that letter by Mass DOT, and they were working on a response.
They are.
I assumed that went out, but if it did.
I haven't received any response, it's been several months. Thank you.
I did meet, we had a meeting.
Yes.
Probably a couple of years ago.
We did.
We went over the preliminary plans. There will be some impacts to your property. This tonight is just the one pole that's actually across the street from your property on Tickle Road, and they're going to move it, what'd you say, 46 or 48 feet northerly on that same side of the street opposite your property.
Okay.
So the pole that we're talking about is not on her property?
It is not, it's across the street.
Or not even abutting her property, it's across the street, well, it's across the street.
Yep, across the street.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anything else from the, go ahead.
Madam Chair, just one question. I'm going to just, you're the messenger, so I'm not going to attack you. But what we just spent 10 minutes on is going around in circles about, basically, Westport has lost complete, total local control over this, and it's a Mass DOT project. I think it's a complete waste of taxpayer money. We've lost local control. I don't understand how 177 is any different than 88. We have five intersections on 88 with varying degrees of intersections with higher traffic levels and lower traffic levels where the traffic lights are triggered. But so, I, just out of principle alone, I know this was prior to me, I will vote against this, and I'll vote against anything about putting a rotary on 177. I think it's a complete waste. If anyone goes to the rotary over by Tiven Casino, you'll know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? So I think we have a motion and a second, right? Or do we, we didn't have a second? Or we don't have a motion? All right, so what's the pleasure of the board? What do we want to do? Do we want to wait? Do we want to deny? Do we want to approve?
I don't know that we can deny this request, it's just a utility request.
Well, I mean, it requires our approval, so we don't have to approve it. But I think, I mean, I think I would like more information about the overall project before we start moving utility lines, because I do think that, from what I can tell from these drawings, there would be overhead wires over the property. So I think that, you know, she's right to be concerned about how it's going to affect her. But I don't, I also don't understand that, yeah, I understand getting ahead of the project, but I think we're well ahead, so I think that it seems like there's time to wait on this approval. But I don't know, what do you guys?
Madam Chair, just a point of that, I think when this started, when this process started, I don't think there was as much development in that location as there is now. And, you know, if I was a person that purchased a house on any of those, I guess, four corners, I'd have concerns, you know, with the rotary coming through there. So again, I'm not saying we should deny this, I'm just saying that I think the project is flawed from its inception, and I don't understand why a $200,000 traffic light wouldn't be, wouldn't be a better option there.
I'd like to agree with Jake on that.
And I was joking about the $200,000, but that's what it'll cost.
I think it's going to be more than that.
Yeah.
We got one at Gifford Road that's supposed to be going through, so we know how much that'll cost, but I think the design was like 70,000 or 80,000.
The Gifford Road?
Yeah.
We have about 250, 300,000.
Again, I was involved when this first came in on the planning board, and I did try to get this across to people. When I heard about it, they were developing those lots at the same time. Nobody wanted to say anything that this was going to go on, but this was something that the former chief wanted because there's some fatalities in that area. I mean, I agree, I noticed, you know, going to the end of Old Westport Road, next to UMass, they put some lights over there in that intersection, and I thought, oh, you made the intersection beautiful. I think once Gifford Road, if Gifford Road got their lights before this one, we'd realize that that's really all we need is a set of lights, but.
All right, so the matter before us right now, though, is do we authorize this pole hearing? So we either need a motion to move forward the pole hearing, or we're going to table it and not take any action.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to get more information, particularly on behalf of the property owner, who raised a number of questions, but we're not completely answered or couldn't be at the moment, so I would suggest we do not take any action tonight.
Okay.
I think I would just suggest to the parties, at least the applicants, that they involve DOT in the presentation next time.
Yeah, so I think because this is a public hearing, the appropriate action would be to continue the public hearing. Do we know, like, maybe late January meeting? Do we have our meeting calendar? I think you have the dates memorized.
Last day is the 26th.
The 26th of January? So I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until January 26th at 6:05.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Bring some more backup with you next time. The next item we have on the agenda is fee increases for Council on Aging and the Building Department. Do we have, is this you, Jim, or do you have anyone?
I believe Ralph from the Council on Aging are here. Talked about, the Council on Aging, I guess is first.
You have the.
The Council on Aging first. But you're not Bev, but go ahead. Can you come? Can you come to?
I didn't know whether you were speaking for Bev or in addition to Bev tonight.
Yeah, is Bev coming?
You didn't know? No, I.
I prefer Eileen to David, so that's a plus.
You can sit, or you can stand, whichever, you're more comfortable. So, Jim, do you want to, do you want to help out Eileen here?
Yeah, my understanding is the last time the fees were raised were in August of '23. She's looking to, Bev was looking to raise a number of fees, not significantly, but just enough to bring in some additional revenue to help offset some of the costs. Again, they haven't been raised in three or four years. Aerobics going from 25 to $30 per month per person. The yacht class, there'd be no change. Balance and Bones, and I don't know what that is, but $12 a month up to $15. Chef, chef on a shoestring. 15 to 25, but that's the five classes. Fitness Focus, 5 to 7. Men's Exercise, 25 to 30. Stretching Tone, 25 to 30, and that's a month per person, I believe. And then Supportive Day Program, $50 per day up to $60 per day per student. Supportive Day Program Transportation, $5 one-way, $10 round trip going up to 750 and 15. And out of town would be 12, up to 1250 and $25 from 10 and 20. Transportation, donation requested when they do their pickups and drop-offs, $5 one-way, $10 round trip. And then yoga, $5 a class up to $7 per class.
So that's the request?
That is correct.
Did you have anything you wanted to talk about?
We have been discussing this for quite a while, for a few months. We're looking to cover the expenses of the classes, of the programs, and when you compare the cost of many of these classes, it's a $2, $3 raise, increase in the cost is not that much, we feel. We had very interesting discussions at our board meetings, and many of the board members were suggesting that we raise the fees even more, but we felt that this was in keeping with our population and with, they were reasonable. I believe that many of the fees had not been raised since June of 2021, right after the pandemic, and that Supportive Day has gone up slightly because of, in 2023, because of, it's more labor-intensive.
Well, Dick, I know you're our liaison.
Yes, yeah, I heard the conversations, I didn't have this in front of me at the time, but I do agree that the fee increases are modest, particularly in a couple of areas such as supportive daycare, which is, in other communities, a lot more is charged for that.
That is correct.
However, I don't have a problem with small increases, and I would support this as presented, but I think we should get on a schedule of every year or two to look at these fees. And I've always felt, when I was in business, small increases on a more frequent basis are better than going for years and having large increases. That's what annoys people, and a lot of people can't afford a dramatic increase. So I would support this, Madam Chair, but I would suggest that the Council on Aging, take a look at this, maybe even on an annual basis, I'm not saying it has to be changed on an annual basis, but at least look at it and say, how are we doing here? And particularly in reference to what other towns are doing, because we are definitely low in, from what the discussion was that I took part in.
All right, but you're recommending?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Second.
So we assume you're moving it?
Yeah, I made a motion, but I articulated very well.
You moved it, you second, okay. Is there any further discussion? Anything else from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
And then we have the Building Department. Welcome, Ralph.
Good evening.
Jim, do you want to go over this one first?
Yeah, so he's looking at two increases, one for new construction, additions and alterations from 50 cents per square foot up to a dollar per square foot with a minimum increase of $50 from 250 to 300. And then for new construction for commercial properties from 50 cents a square foot up to 75 cents per square foot, instead of a minimum of 100, or is that staying, Ralph?
That's there, well, 1% across the construction, the minimum would go away.
Okay. So from $50 per square foot with a minimum of $100 to 75 cents per square foot with a minimum of 1% of total construction, whichever is higher.
All right.
These fees were compared with Dartmouth Somerset in Swansea, and then compare them with Forover in Bedford, because they've got more overhead, it's a different, it's a different permit scale over there.
Okay, can you talk about why you think these increases are necessary?
Basically to run the department, keep things.
Do you know when the last time they were up?
I believe I touched on them more, maybe six months to a year ago. Square footage was changed on the residential side and the commercial side back then.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the board?
I do know when we had an interim inspector here for a few months, he was very surprised at how low our fees were.
Yeah. All right, this is a public hearing, is there anything from the public? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I would move these fee increases as recommended by the Building Department.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under appointments or resignations, we have a request from George Stelges, alternate member of the zoning board of appeals, to be appointed as a regular member. So I think there is an opening for the regular member, right?
Yes.
We don't have anyone here for that, do we?
Madam Chair, I know this gentleman, and I recommend him highly for this position, the upgrade position, to be a primary member.
Second.
And I would make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have a request from Dana Stewart, Recreation Director, to approve a donation of $160 from Abigail Dunbar for use of the new bicentennial playground.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have a request from Carol Freitas, the Veteran Service Officer, to approve two anonymous donations totaling $300.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have a request from Captain Bill Chase on our agenda again, the Marine Service Director, to approve the posting for part-time seasonal workers for the 2026 season. It's like he's trying to get, jump on the game here. Are you, do you have?
Recommend approval.
Motion to approve posting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have a request to direct the Affordable Housing Trust and the Planning Board to work on a request for proposals or a request for information relating to potential housing options for the old high school. So Craig, are you talking about this one, or is somebody else, Jim, talking about this one?
No, I think I'm talking about this.
Okay.
Didn't see anybody, oh, Jim.
Jim, you want to come join us?
Yes, that was, that was probably, Jim and I had a joint discussion about it and thought it was a good idea, so we sort of co-facilitated the discussion, and we had a meeting that involved the Chairman of the Long-Term Building Committee, but we did it in such a way that no one had to call a special meeting of their board, because we only had one, maybe two representatives from these boards for this discussion, so.
So you want to tell us what you're asking for, or?
Yeah, basically, the, and I wasn't, I was at this town meeting, but I was not on the board at the time, but the motion to create the Long-Term Building Committee came out of a vote at town meeting that constrained the ability of the Long-Term Committee to consider, it was mostly targeting towards repurposing the high school to be used for consolidation and co-location of municipal departments and other functions. There wasn't much said or charged in that. And so they charged the Select Board, I think, with the ability to create the committee, and then the board at the time, again, I wasn't on the board, there's only two of you on the board, that's why I'm looking at Todd and Dick, decided to limit it to probably what was the spirit of the discussion at town meeting, or the intention was to municipal uses and for potential consolidation of town offices. So the RGB study that was done over a year ago, and we heard a full presentation of that report maybe a month or so ago, was bound by past studies done and by the constraints that both town meeting and this board put on it. Jim, anything to?
Sure. I think what you said is absolutely accurate from my perspective, but in the, I attended the presentation at the old high school library, or whatever room that is now, by RGB, or, is it RGB?
That's correct. Yep. What, it used to be the old media center.
Right. Before that, it was a gymnasium. So quite a few people got up and spoke about housing at that meeting. And subsequent to that, I met somebody at a serpent function in New Bedford, that their business is repurposing municipal buildings for residences. And talked quite a long time with him and invited him to come to just an information meeting in our office at the annex. He brought with him two other people that are also in this business in the Boston area, and he wanted to know more about the high school. And we had a big give and take. The idea from our office was the contact for them, and also was the contact for the Affordable, the Long-Term Building Committee. And so we've shared all that information with the Long-Term Building Committee Chair, yet I see no inclination as, because of the last proposal for $48 million to knock down 2/3 of the building and re- and repurpose a couple of sections. I think, and I think that the other people on the Planning Board that have talked about this are of the opinion that we should really try to get some, an R F P or an R F I out there to see what people would propose. You know, people like the, the Affordable Housing Group that did Nokochok Village, I think they did a great job there at little cost to the town. It's an asset to the town. We need housing. We need workforce housing. We need affordable housing. We need veterans housing. And it just seemed to us a shame to be knocking down a big structure that we've already paid for. If somebody would be willing to come in as a nonprofit and construct some affordable housing or workforce housing, or put it to a better use than rubble. So they have shared with me and with the office some potential R F Ps that they have been working on in Nantucket. It's like ninety pages long, and I'd be happy to share that with anybody who would like to read it. But I think there are large companies that could bring with them the funding sources to redo some of this building and not have it just go to waste. And that's what I would propose, and that's what I proposed to the Affordable Housing Trust, if they would partner with the planning office to write a proposal to see if we can get any interest. And to, to us, the Long Term Building Committee is a committee set up to recommend to the Select Board, who has the authority from town meeting to do what they think is proper with this building. And it seems to me that they are not the arbiter of what happens, that you folks are, and that you need more choices than what you're going to be given. So, and I don't know if we'll get them, but I think it's worth seeing, putting one, an R F P or an R F I out to see if we get any interest.
Craig, did you want to expand on this?
Just that we did vote to support this idea and to join the Planning Board in that recommendation.
The we is the Affordable Housing Trust?
Right, we is Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay. So I didn't, Jim, I don't know if you're copied on this one, but Mr. Thrasher, who's the Chair of the Long Term Building Committee, sent us an email expressing concerns that I think are actually pretty fair concerns. I was hoping you could talk about them a little bit. So the, so the Long Term Building Committee was, is in the process of putting together the proposal. There's this town meeting, information, information meeting on January, planned for January twenty second, to kind of present the options that we have so far. So can you just talk about, like, the, there's, there's no way that this R F I results are going to be backed by the twenty second chance. Can you maybe talk a little bit about the timing of what the Long Term Building Committee is doing and what you guys are talking about doing?
I, I, I believe it would take a while to write the R F P, because we'd have to meet with somebody from the Select Board, what they have in mind, what all the other, for instance, the Council on Aging, you know, what, what part of that building they want to, want to use, and, and others, to find out what we should write into the R F P. So I'm saying that's probably going to take a couple of months anyway. And then it probably takes a couple of months for people to get back to you with, with, with information, because they're going to want to know more. They can get the information that we have already about the building. So I am not sure that it would even be something that would be available for town meeting unless something happens quickly. And you're kind of running out of time for town meeting with Mr. Thrasher's proposal too, with public hearings and all that stuff, so.
When, when R G B did the presentation here a few months ago and outlined the cost of this, I think, I think it was, at least on the street, so to speak, of Westport, it wasn't well received. People, and I think we've had to steer people from thinking that we could just wave a wand and convert the, the, the old high school at no expense to have be a multi-use town facility, when most of the cost estimates that we've looked at, buried in that R G B proposal, are pretty substantial. It's tens of millions of dollars to do virtually nothing, but maybe bring the building up to code. And even that number, I think, was, was a pretty hefty number. So the fact that, and I think that there was at least, at least this member, and looking around the table at that meeting, there were some, there was some skepticism that even if we were enthusiastic about something, that we would have a hard time selling it as, because it would ultimately be a debt excuse, an override that would go to the voters. And that's what we'd be discussing about at town meeting, maybe not the debt exclusion override itself, but the discussion would have to at some point, you know, lay out the item, the, the options for the public. We're talking about a public hearing now, which would be the next step, as well as the, the cost of those options.
So it's just kind of continuing on Mr. Thrasher's concern. So he's, he's bringing up the concern that I kind of share, that we've directed the Long Term Building Committee to, to go one way with it, and we're teeing up to present that to town for a vote.
Yeah.
And now we have this alternate proposal where we're not going to really have information and time to, to posit, to be able to compare the options at town meeting, right? So what's the advantage to going out, starting this R F P process before we understand whether the town wants to go forward with the other process, with the one that we're already pursuing? Not yet.
If, if you're asking me, I think this just gives you two choices. I mean, you know, they're going to give you one choice, or maybe A, B, and C of whatever they're proposing. And I, I think it would be the right thing to do, to have more input into this than from a consultant. And I think my, my own sense is that if it's a forty eight million dollar project, it'll fail, and then we're another year down the road, and what are we doing? And I think that seeing the, the desires of quite a few people are that we should look at housing, and we should look at how to reuse part of it for the C O A, and how to reuse part of it still for the school administration, and part of it for whatever. But I think, to me, I don't think you should consider yourself stuck with getting information just from the committee that was set up. They've done a lot of work on it, and I'm not saying that it's, it's wrong, but I just don't know that we're just going to waste another year. And if you don't start this process, we're another year beyond that.
So, all right, so, so the way we're going to do this, we're going to take questions from the board, and then we'll go to the top. Go ahead.
So this is the, the study that we just paid for this year was like a couple hundred thousand? Is that what we're talking about?
I think that, I don't know how much R B G.
The, the R G B was in, was in that neighborhood.
So the, an R F P, though, we can do that in house, right?
We can do that with the Planning Board.
There shouldn't be any reason why we don't keep trying that.
Right.
We, we have staff, we have part-time staff, consultant staff on the Housing Trust, and they have full-time staff on the Planning Board. And my point at our meeting was, we do have the internal capacity to generate an R F R. I mean, that, that.
I mean, don't, don't get me wrong. I, I think I'm sounding.
We wouldn't have the internal capacity.
I wish we would have done that. In fact, I think we did do this a few years ago, but I wish we would have done this a few years ago. To me, it's, it's not really that it's a bad idea. It's the timing. Like, I think it undermines the potential vote. I think many of us, myself included, believe that it will not pass at the debt exclusion level, and we need another alternative. And so to me, I like this idea of having started on the other alternative, but it also undermines any success of that in the first place, because people are going to be confused about the two different options. So I'm just, that's where my worry is, that we're just confusing people at kind of a bad point in time.
I, 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 I agree to a, to a, to an extent. But I think it also becomes worse if you try to create this linear type of decision-making process, where you go from point A to point B to point C, and then you stop and go from point D to E and F before you look at the whole picture, because the cat's out of the bag. We've already been talking about it. There's been a fair amount of responses when we did a public hearing on this matter at the old media center, I think it's probably, was, I think right after, right after I got back on the board in early twenty four. And, and it hasn't, it, every time we talk about it, or somebody else talks about it, there's buzz. And so I think that, you know, is there a way, so what I'm trying to avoid is some ways to stop moving forward on several different fronts, knowing that entirely different conversation is going to have to, to evolve about how to present it. Right now, I'm just saying is, do we present an, an option? Do we support the presentation of another option? Is, is, what I would like to see before us today, as opposed to having a strategic discussion about how to present the total package.
Anyone else?
I think, you can.
I don't know.
You can go first.
He waved you. He's.
I'm allowing you.
Thank you. I'm curious as to whether or not the Long Term Building Committee has reviewed this and has approved it. I think not, based on Mr. Thrasher's letter, but I don't know that as a fact. If it's, if they have not deliberated on this issue, we are, we are in effect undermining what they're doing, and maybe undermining the project, although I'm not sure. But I don't like that approach. The Select Board appointed them to do the analysis. If they're not doing it to our liking or taking too long, then we need to deal with that. But to go ahead with this proposal and approve it, I would be ill-advised. And I was hoping, when I read the agenda for this meeting, I envisioned that Mr. Thrasher would be here and would be talking about it and maybe even supporting it. That's what I thought would happen, only because when he was here before, we talked about the need, nor if this to pass at all, we need choices. And he did say, and I think it was on a slide that he showed us, that affordable housing was, would be considered in that, but there was more work to be done. I like the idea of affordable housing as being a use of that property. I always have liked that idea, and didn't like some other ideas. But I don't think we should move ahead with this recommendation tonight. We should have a, a joint discussion with the Building Committee, with the Long Term Building Committee, which are the people we appointed to do this. And if they haven't done it, like I say, that's another story. So I would, that would be my opinion, Madam Chair, and others.
Thank you. Craig?
Madam Chair, thank you. I, I echo your sentiments and Dick's sentiments on this. I probably couldn't say it any better. I think prior to my time, the Select Board created the Long Term Building Committee to address the issues and address the issues with the high school. And on that, you both had a representative from the Planning Board, and you had a Select Board appointee, who actually is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, sitting on that Long Term Building Committee. So I thought the representation was there and, and the.
Clarification. I was not on either the Affordable Housing Trust or the Long Term Building Committee at that time. I didn't get on the Long Term Building Committee until I was, got elected two years ago. However, I did get reappointed by this board to the Affordable Housing Trust a year, I think it was twenty two, twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three. And so when I was on the, the Affordable Housing Trust, I raised the issue in a meeting with our, the select person's liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust, who at the time was Ann Boxler, who preceded me on this board. So, and, and she, she perceived the limitations of this as not really being expansive towards housing as an option. That was, but I hate to put words in other people's mouths, but she, she continues to serve as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, and was actually, I believe, well, we had a quorum, so there's a good chance she might have been there for our discussion on this at the last week or the week before, but I can't say that for a fact.
So, you know, my concern is the process, where, you know, it seems like this is coming in at the eleventh hour and kind of throwing a wrench into it. As many people know publicly, I'm not a huge proponent of a forty eight million or fifty million dollar plan for the high school, but I continue to want to see action. So I appreciate Jim trying to present something that looks forward to action on that site. I think housing has been addressed numerous times over the years. I think there's an infrastructure problem there. You have a water and sewer problem. Unless we're talking ten years down the road and you're running water and sewer down one seventy seven and Sanford Road to get there, I don't see how you're going to support it with the infrastructure that's currently there. And maybe there is a small component that can help privately fund the rest of the building, as you pointed out, but we have school facilities using it, which they have no other place to go. We have the administration offices in there. We have rec sports, and we have out-to-school care currently in there, and we have other town groups willing to go in there. So I continue to say that this building is an asset, and we need to figure out the best way to get there, but I don't think right now, look, going down the road of housing is the answer. But maybe there is a public-private partnership that, that would work. I just don't think that the housing component, especially with the lack of infrastructure on that current site, works.
Nokochok Village was a private-public partnership, and it was, I mean, it was a private nonprofit, but then again, it could take advantage of all the tax credits and grant programs that would not be evolved, would be necessarily available to a for-profit developer. So we've done it, but it's been a while. And, I mean, it's been, I think, Nokochok came, it's been online for at least five years, and, and the populations and demographics have been changing. And, and, you know, and as you see a population that, that is eight, I mean, at the rate, looking at some of, I'm not talking about the last year, because we just had a sort of a stark presentation of what's going on in the housing market, which there's been, there's been a slowdown, a considerable slowdown in the last three or four years. But the demographics of the town is still the same. We have an aging population. We have an aging population that is more, going to be more dependent, or more, that's looking to have fine housing that's available for them where they grew up, or where they, where they raised their families, and don't want to have to go looking in other cities, most likely urban communities. Not that they have anything against urban areas, but it's a whole different culture. And I think that, that cost structure and that, and that, so to the extent we could do it. And, and yes, it's come up. Septic, you know, we don't, we're not going to have a sewer line running, you know. I mean, that was, I know that was a facetious comment, Jake, but, but, you know, we know that you're going to have to do it within the constraints of, of, of having to generate water and, and, disposal of wastewater on grounds that you control. And that's one of the, one of the nice facets of Nokochok Village. We were able to do it. And so. And so...
Yeah, I would just, if I could, Madam Chair, just about the infrastructure. Nokochuk Village was in the same boat. But we worked with them and with their engineers and everything, and it has worked out pretty well. They found a place to have enough water from the water well. And we worked with them to design a wastewater system that is better than we're asking anybody else in town, and it works. And it cost them less money than a regular Title V system would have cost them. And I think I'd leave it to the people who are trying to put this in, to see if it works. And that's part of the RFP process. They would have to figure out, is it possible on that site to do 60 units or whatever it is? And to me, the more choices that the Select Board has to make a decision is for the benefit of the town. To make sure that you don't look over here, because the committee that you chose to do it doesn't want to look over here, I think is a disservice to the town. So, that's just my...
I do want to, I do want to just say that, so, over the various studies that have happened with the Long-Term Building Committee, the, the committee came to the Select Board, like, a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, and asked for direction. So, they came and said they needed to focus the study on a direction. And the Select Board, I don't remember who was here at the time, but the Select Board at the time directed them to prioritize use as a municipal facility. So, we specifically, this board specifically directed them to kind of take that path. So, that's the reason they took that path, because we were spinning in all these different options. So, we had gone out for RFI before. We had looked at some, in the very early studies, we had looked at potential for housing and things like that. Now, not the same thing you're talking about, but I don't remember why we didn't kind of pursue that back then. But it was, it wasn't that the committee took a direction off on their own and went rogue. They came to us and asked us for a direction, and we gave it to them, to focus on the municipal building. Now, the current proposal, as I understand it, is not the municipal building, so maybe that argument is out the water, but...
Don't recall being on the committee, this board.
Were you on that committee before? Do you remember any of them?
I remember we've been kicking the can down the street for seven years now, since I've been involved in politics. That's all I know.
So, the original committee, the committee changed its makeup about three or four years ago. The original committee, going back four years, five, almost five years now, had looked at different options. They had hired UTO engineering to do a study on potential uses. They did look at affordable housing. At the time, and every study can be challenged, right? But at the time, in their study, they felt that converting the existing building to affordable housing was not an option, it was going to be too expensive. They looked at affordable housing, if the building was torn down, as the building individual units. You have two limiting factors there. One is the public water supply wells. Right now, you're limited to under 5,000 gallons per day. And the other one is a septic system, which is 10,000 gallons per day, which limits you to 54 bedrooms complete on the site. So, if you had 54 bedrooms on the site, you wouldn't have any other uses. That gets you up to just under 10,000 gallons per day. If you go over 10,000 gallons per day, then it becomes a different category. It's a treatment facility. You need onsite representatives on a daily basis to manage the system. And it does not seem like that is a cost-effective option once you go over a certain amount of gallons per day. So, they tried to, just like Nokochuk, where I think it was 54 bedrooms, they kept it to 9,000.
9,990.
So, that was, one, they felt, I think, the building, to convert it to housing, and they were looking at the entire building, right? So, they weren't looking, you know, you're talking about different things now, where you might only be looking at a portion of the building. But to convert the whole thing to housing was not feasible, or they didn't think it was feasible at that time. They felt it would be more cost-effective to tear it down and build individual housing. And that's one study, you know, every study can be...
Which also is not cost-effective, because it's going to cost you $5 million to knock it down and get rid of it. And then you've got a piece of property that's worth a million and a half, so...
I mean, part of, part of the, part of the way that affordable housing comes affordable is by subsidies, and the biggest subsidy right now is land. And the fact that, that's why it was land that we'd done these things, and that we did Nokochuk, or we did, we had control of the land. I mean, we had, it was, we did have to pay some money. I wasn't, I was, that was way before my time. But, and we didn't have a housing trust until 2010. It was created, it was authorized at the 2009 town meeting, but by the time the Affordable Housing Trust was put together, it was early 2010, because I wasn't on the board at the time, and both boards. And at that time, we had control of land that now houses Nokochuk Village, and it was already in the possession of the town. So, it became a, basically, an avoided cost for developing it, which allowed us to economically, not us, but the developer and the housing corporation, to create affordable housing.
Is there anything else from the board? Any comments from the public?
Yes, if I may. I'm David La Lima. I'm a board member of the Council on Aging, and I've been involved with this old high school for maybe six years. I met with Jim and others at Bob Hawes's house. I've met with John Perry countless times when they were on, had their meetings. I met with Jim, talking about this, having been at the BRA, Boston Redevelopment Authority, when I was out of law school. I have many thoughts about this, and it's very frustrating to hear, since I authored a proposal a year ago, almost now, which included housing. In fact, I even talked about housing prior to then, when we were talking about, I remember going to Michael Burris and others in the beginning, four years ago, thinking about maybe housing. And I heard all the arguments that, that were then a predicate to not doing it, okay? I think coming to the Council on Aging enlightened me to the understanding that we had a huge, I think on a marquee, we have housing and we have cultural issues that are equal, not one over the other. They're not separate, and we have to address both. And the proposal I wrote a year ago, which included a community campus that got sort of railroaded through the committee because they ended up using outrageous amounts of numbers, which to me was a code for no, okay? I know that people didn't believe us when we said, when I met with you, Madam Chair, a year ago, or maybe, maybe less than that, where we proposed a community campus. And in my original proposal, it included housing. And people talked me out of it. They said, "Scary, it's going to scare people away." In fact, I was using Nokochuk as an example of what you could possibly do. And there was all kinds of different points of view about whether or not Nokochuk was a good idea, should we have it or not. I even offered to Michael Burris a proposal that I saw in Newburyport, 54 units on four acres of land. I thought, well, so my mentality at the time was housing, until I got to the council. And I realized, once I got there at that old high school, that it was a gift to us. That school is a gift to this town. Everything we're talking about can be put in that building. We can put housing there, we can have schools there, the community. I mean, I would say, with all due respect, and I don't mean to disparage anyone, but in this town, we have asked at the council for space over time. No one has offered us more space. We have begged to go in that high school on a temporary basis. We're meeting tomorrow. We're meeting tomorrow morning to go over the rules of updates and no updates. Can we go there? Why can't we go there? We want to go there now, because we don't have enough room. And if we don't have enough room to go at the high school, I ask you all, you five people, where are you going to send us? Where are we going to go? We have no more room. We have lines waiting for all kinds of services. We can't offer them. We have a high school sitting over there, empty, and we're not using it. And people ask us, with all due respect, Jim, after that meeting, I was at the meeting, I presented at that meeting. And I can tell you that there was more people for housing than there were for community campus. It was even, they're not mutually exclusive ideas here. And I think sadly, I think, and maybe in the beginning, and I agree, we were probably a little hyperbolic when we said, "It won't cost us anything," okay? In the beginning, we want to go temporarily. We do want to go over to the high school. We want to go over there right now. We don't have enough room, okay? And we could pay for any upgrades to get us in that building. And let us go there and prove to you that this is a community campus building. We'll give you time to get housing. We'll give you time to do all these other things. Give us a chance to do this. And maybe, I mean, I had a long conversation, maybe it was two weeks ago with Ross Moran after one of the meetings, and we sat, and we talked about, and the idea that, I think Jim's offering is an idea that I had, that why don't we, in fact, I called up the Assistant Town Manager and I said, the Town Planner, and I said, "There was a project in East Hampton, when I was working at DSS, and we were trying to do housing for grandparents for adoptive kids." And so, this woman in Boston, got Beacon Communities, Beacon Communities, I think they were, big developer in Boston, and they brought them out to East Hampton, and they did two projects. Development company built this place called Treehouse. And Town of East Hampton gave them the property, and then they built 50, 75, 100 houses next to it. So, the developer had this nice little arrangement. He was developing something for social services, something like a campus, but different. And then they were doing housing. So, I left the meeting with Ross, saying, "Gee, you know, maybe I should, maybe I should try to find..." "Why am I doing it? I should try to find a developer for the town that would do just like this idea, instead of adoptive homes, but for the community, a cultural center, community center for activities, for lonings, cards, games, activities, education. It's expansive for this entire town. It's needed in this town." I called up Assistant Town Planner, and she said, "Well, you know, you have all kinds of violations, upgrades." She gave me no, it was a no. Not a maybe, "How can I help you?" It was no. She said, "I really don't take no very well, okay? Let's try to get the yes. Let's figure out a way to get the yes, not to no." So, we're meeting tomorrow to find out how we can maybe get in temporarily into the building, if anything, to prove to you that we need it, and we can explore other options. There's nothing that our, my proposal, or any of ours at the council, thinks that housing is bad. It's not a bad idea. It's complicated. There are all the issues that have been raised that make it complicated. And a $48 or $72 million is a no. We're not asking. I think they want to make this building perfect before we get in, okay? We don't agree with that. We do not agree with that. Now, maybe that's the problem we're having, and maybe we should say to you, "Well, maybe we need 10 million. Maybe we only need 10 million to get in there, and work on what the issues are, and give you a plan. Let us give you a plan. We're willing to give you a plan."
So, David, I appreciate your passion and enthusiasm, because you've done a lot of work.
I'm giving you a blueprint, though.
The request before us right now, the request before us right now is...
To do housing.
No. The request before us right now is, should we direct, should we, this board, direct the Affordable Housing Trust and the Planning Board to work on an RFI? So, that's the question we're going to address today. So, I couldn't tell from that...
Well, what I'm asking you is that...
Whether you think we should go for this RFI or should not go for the RFI.
I think that's confusing. You've just muddied the waters more than you ever.
But it sounded like what you were proposing was putting together an RFI for how you could use the space.
I would, I would think, I would think temp, okay. You can have your cake and eat it too, I believe, in this case. I don't think it's that complicated, okay? I think you can do, on a temporary basis, get people, I mean, why don't you expe...
Well, that's not before us right now. The question before us right now is, should we direct the Housing Trust and the Planning Board to move forward with this RFI proposal?
And the proposal is RFP or RFI. There's a distinction between one. One, the RFP is, you've got a plan that you want to have executed, and you request proposals to do that. And RFE is, RFI, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, because you've been doing this planning stuff longer than I have, is more, is a little bit, has a little bit of a fishing expedition attached to it.
To find out if people have interest in it, basically.
And I think Ross's idea is sort of in tune with what we're trying to, I think I'm just trying to thread, a fine line between these two ideas, okay? I think the campus idea, even though Chris Thrasher tells me over and over again, we're on the same page. We're not on the same page, because we're not asking for 48 million, we're not asking for 72 million. We're asking for a community campus concept. And included in the concept is housing. These are not disparate ideas, they're together. And that's what I think the point here is, that we can go forward, not with two different extreme ideas, but one idea. I don't think, personally, I don't think the whole building should be housing. If you're going to put housing, and you have a, where are we going to go? I would ask you, with all due respect, if you take the high school and give it to housing, where are you going to send the Council on Aging with 5,000 square feet and 8,000 people in this town, who are champing at the bit to get exercises and doing whatever they need to do? You have no alternative. You've offered, no, Jim hasn't, Planning Board hasn't, the board hasn't. No one has offered us an alternative. We're like second-class citizens right now. And yet, we offered you the best idea, we offered you the best idea for this town. And what do we get? We don't even get to the table. The Thrasher's group never invited us to the table. I went to the architectural people after the town meeting. I went to them, gave them my card, never called back.
So, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but I think we, I didn't put a timer on you.
Where, you give them status to have a meeting to discuss housing, yet you don't talk to the Council on Aging about anything we're doing. It's not appropriate.
We haven't had a request for the agenda item for the council.
What do you think we've been talking about for the last year?
David, you've been here many times, so...
Well, I wasn't invited to go to the Thrasher Group, and I wasn't invited to go to the Architectural Group, nor was Eileen, nor was Beverly. Not one of us has this idea been fleshed out.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Does anyone else have any? No, we have Evan.
Please go.
I really thank you for your effort and your time. I really think that the Select Board is on the precipice of a decision. I think you have the potential to address an issue that's very complex. This is not easy. And you, and seven years is a long time to have an empty building or a semi-empty building. The world has changed in the last seven years. The needs of the town have changed a lot in the last seven years. And so, it may be time to look at this whole issue of the old high school, and what are you going to do with it in light of, we're on the precipice of 2026. Could you believe it? You know, and it's been a long time that we knew that the high school was going to close, and that we knew that there would be a new high school. And yet, we have, as Manny said, kicked this can down the road. I really think that a decision needs to be made, and the more options that are out there realistically for this day and age, it may be confusing to people. You have to do a better job at explaining to those people why. It's a different time, a different place, and a different set of needs that are needing to be addressed now than perhaps seven years ago.
But to the topic, so again, I couldn't tell. So, are you, are you saying that an RFI, we should positively consider an RFI to get more options to the table? Or are you saying that we should proceed without the RFI?
I think to have the RFI might be a really good thing to have. You put a time limit on, I mean, if you have the in-house resources to put it together, and you have, you put a time limit, like, "We need this in six weeks," or, you know. There are a lot of people who do this for a living, or who have done it for a living, and are sitting at home because they were furloughed, or, you know. And this, this is not a new problem to solve. This is an old nut to crack.
So, I'm suggesting, I'm proposing...
So I'm suggesting, I'm proposing and supporting your effort.
Thank you. Evan? Yeah, go ahead, Manny.
Jim, you think, think maybe that the Council on Aging could work with
Yeah, that's what I would propose. That's what I said in the beginning, that we would talk with the COA, that needs room. Recreation needs to have some input into it.
I think when I was involved
It's not just housing.
Loop a little bit, but when I was involved in it, we were talking about trying to phase something. And I think this idea that seniors are coming up, it's perfect. Get in there, preserve what we have left of the building now, get some of the minor repairs. I mean, did they stop the furnace? You know, we had some water problems down in the basement over there. I actually met the person that installed that boiler system in there, and I had some conversations with him. And it's something that we can maintain for that building. It's usable for a long period.
Thank you. Evan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note first that while I'm a member of the Long-Term Building Committee, I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, just on my opinion. I have a number of concerns with the proposal. Without getting into the merits of what should or shouldn't be done with the high school, or if there should or should not be housing, just looking at the process and the timeline, this board charged the committee with looking at potential reuse for the site, what that could look like, engaging a consultant, which was done at the will of the voters of town meeting. And this board supported the RFP for it, I think almost, it was about a year ago when we started looking at that process at this point. So the consultant has, is completing that work, and the Long-Term Building Committee had presented, and RGB had presented the options that they had come to. I think we've, between that, the UTILE study before that, and others that were done, quite frankly, I think we've studied this to death over the years. It's taken a long time to get to this point that we're at now, and I have concerns with adding in a separate proposal at this point in the process as we're nearing the end of that. I believe also both RGB and the chair of the committee proposed a potential scope amendment if housing wanted to be explored further. And I'm not sure if that, if the Planning Board or Housing Trust ended up supporting that, but that way it kind of helps streamline the process again, so it's under one umbrella. And I know the last proposal that was discussed included removing the center portion of the building, which could, in theory, be used for housing, but I think there was a potential scope amendment that was discussed that could have looked at that a little further as well, but I don't believe that was supported based on the discussion item tonight. So again, just have a number of concerns, mostly on the process and the timeline. I'm not saying that there should or should not be housing there, or that the, or there should or shouldn't be municipal reuse of the building, but again, just on process and timeline. I think also, given the diligence that's been done both by the consultant, the committee, this board, over the years, I think we owe it to the taxpayers and the voters to present options at, whether it's, you know, a town meeting this year, or as a ballot question on the April election, I think that we owe it to voters to kind of come up with something that we can present to say that there's a final product to the vote that was taken at this point a number of years ago at town meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Madam Chair, consistent with my earlier remarks, I would not vote in favor of this request, not out of any disrespect or any feeling that it's not worthy, because I think the housing discussion is worthy of further discussion, as Mr. Thrasher had indicated a short, a while ago. That was the scope thing that Mr. General was referring to. But I think this puts us on the wrong track, but I think we ought to encourage the Long-Term Building Committee to have at this and come to a conclusion, which we want them to, hoping in joint discussion with the Affordable Housing and Planning Board. So I would table this for another time. I'm not in favor of approving this tonight, but I do think that the idea of housing is worthy of much further consideration.
So is your, your thought is to table and take no action, or another alternative to refer it to the Long-Term Building Committee?
Well, I don't have a preference, really. Let's face it, this has gone on a long time. We've all said that tonight. But I don't want to put blame on the Long-Term Building Committee. It's been a difficult project. It's taken this long because it's a very, very difficult and expensive project. So we're all trying to find a solution that would pass muster with the voters, and we haven't quite been able to do that. But I think at some point soon, the Long-Term Building Committee has to weigh in with the Select Board and present their work and their decisions, their recommendations, and then we can decide what to do after that. And I think it's coming quickly. The clock is ticking on this.
I'm not going to, I mean, I've already stated my opinion, I supported putting this item on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to vote in favor of that.
But we don't have a motion. I need a motion of some sort, I think, or we're going to table it.
I mean, I think Dick laid out a pretty good motion, and I think it's allowing the Long-Term Building Committee to continue to address the housing option. I think they had, they offered the opportunity to do that, I think.
I don't believe they have a
We do not have a motion. We don't have a motion. He was speaking.
Would, do you want me to craft a
I don't care if there's a motion or not. Like, we have two options, we have three options, right? We can take no action, which does not require any motion. We can move to support the proposal to direct this, which would require a motion a second. Or we could have moved to not support it, which would require a motion a second. So we don't have to do anything. I'm just saying, if anyone wants to make a motion, this will be the time to do it.
I'll take no action.
All right, so we're not, we're taking no action.
I guess this will go down as one of those meetings where we take no action, because we just tabled one other recommendation. So I moved to table a pending development of, I can count votes, and I know that we don't have the votes to do this joint proposal, but
I mean, you don't have to have a motion. We can just stop talking about it.
Well, we, I think that, I think though, that's not what we want to do. I mean, we did get, we have, we're 80% there in terms of getting a solid recommendation out of the Long-Term Building Committee. But I think we've heard that the Planning Board, that the Council on Aging, and the Affordable Housing Trust don't see any room for ourselves, speaking at least now for the Affordable Housing Trust, in that process. And so that's where the idea of, you know, I want us to be part of that process, but right now, I don't see that. And so I think we're going to do an up or down, take whatever the final number is coming out of the Long-Term Building Committee to town meeting, because we need to keep, you know, and I'm not saying this is a proposal, I see some folks shaking their heads out there, I'm saying, what I'm hearing is if you go with putting the Long-Term Building Committee proposal on the path that it's already on, which is to do a public hearing in January, and then use that as a basis for advancing a proposal that would have a dollar figure attached to it, that would go before town meeting in the spring. Eventually, we'd have to go to the voters, probably the voters first and then the town meeting.
Okay. So are you making a motion of any sort, or are we just going to table? You sounded like you wanted to make, to move to table it, or move to refer it to the committee. I don't, I can't.
And Craig, with all due respect, I mean, you sit on the Long-Term Building Committee, and you're the Select Board representative, and on the Affordable Housing Trust, so isn't that the vehicle that this probably should have gone through, and a proper vehicle of what the Select Board has created? So that's, that's what my concern is. You know, we're going in a different direction, yet you sit on there as a representative of both, and
This was not, this broader proposal has been discussed but wasn't brought up in a way that it was brought up today. And the Planning Board took the leadership on it, and we met with our, we met jointly to discuss it, and there was a positive motion, and I suggested, I think, to the chair or to somebody that we put this on the agenda tonight so we can keep this moving. But I did not see that as, as a preemptive strike to derail the path that the Long-Term Building Committee was already on.
All right, so I haven't heard a motion, so I think we're done with this topic, unless there's anything further.
I think that maybe, that would be healthy in the next couple of weeks, that representatives of the committees that are impacted, put together, and what I'm looking for is that housing is in that facility use somewhere.
All right. Thank you.
Until it says, oh, that's impossible, you can't get a Burke test, you can't do this, but at least at this point in time, I think, I think we should, with that kind of property and that, the amount of space and facilities, not to have housing as an option would be, would be a shame. And I'm surprised that it didn't happen sooner, but I was, you know, in some respects, I wasn't on the Affordable Housing Trust, nor was I on the Select Board at that time.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And just in regards to you, about the septic and stuff, I mean, we have been doing this a long time. Sean Leach was in a lot of these meetings, and he did tell us that it wasn't suitable for housing. It's, the backside of that site's mostly filled.
It's all wet. It's all filled.
All right, so Jim, anything before we let you go?
No, I just, I just think that if you're going to ask the Long-Term Building Committee to add in with RGB, or whatever their name is, a determination whether or not there's a potential for housing, I think the easiest, or the best way to do that, as opposed to just going to a consultant, is sending out an RFI or RFP and let them decide. The people who do this have been doing this a long time, and they know how to figure it out. And then you'd have an idea whether or not you really get anybody, as opposed to trying to make affordable housing yourself and paying the money, which is
Well, I think that people can still take us back to the Long-Term Building Committee. Just because we're not taking action doesn't mean they can't go back to the committee. So I trust you guys will take it there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request from the Reposea Family Trust to construct a 60-foot by 80-foot agricultural structure on agricultural preservation restricted land, APR land, located at 1077 Main Road. Welcome.
Thank you.
Ray Reposea, hey, Ray. Welcome. Jim, do you want to explain this one to us?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the majority of this land is under an agricultural preservation restriction. You would like to construct a building to be used for agricultural purposes. Because it is under restriction, and Westport is a cosignee or a co-host of the restriction, we have to sign off on that building, to allow that building to be constructed.
And has it already been approved by whoever it was approved by?
It hasn't really been approved by anyone yet.
Yeah, okay.
The state's waiting for approval from the town first before they issue any permits of their own.
All right. Can you just tell us what the building is going to be used for?
Hay storage.
Sounds agricultural in nature to me.
Yeah. It's going to be for dry hay, hopefully.
Okay. You're not going to open up like a bed and breakfast, right?
No, I have no plans on inviting that many people.
All right. Anybody have questions? Go ahead.
So you have this, the land's held in the trust, Reposea Family Trust?
Yes.
That what you're saying? So you, the trustee, or?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And what do you have, like 60,000 square feet cut out of that for your house?
Yeah, the house lot, the commercial building.
Yeah, how is that, like, how is that in relationship to your tax bill? How does that work?
I just get one big tax bill for the whole enchilada.
That's what I thought, right?
Yep.
Okay. Are you on the
Agcom still, even though we haven't been active.
Well, I just seen here that there's a, there's a, an opening. I'd like to, I'd like to get on there.
Oh, would you? Okay.
I got, I got a new email, town email, so if you could
Yeah, that's a whole other subject.
So you get appointed to a committee, you'd need to come before this board.
Well, that's
I'm looking for another chairman, honestly.
You have to make a request to the Select Board.
So I guess I'll do that
And make a request to the Select Board.
So I, because I have some land that I've been trying to get into APR.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
And large, so we can keep the developers away, so I'd like to get into it.
Yes.
I just want to ask a question regarding these diagrams, the aerial diagrams, I could ask Mr. Reposea. The building, there's one that has a square on it with an X behind the existing building. Is that the location? Because there's another diagram that, there's another one that has the new structure, I think. Let's move back a little bit.
Well, the, on that picture there, the one in the green
That was yours.
Yeah.
The building a little bit over this way.
Well, none of it's that accurate with the maps that I was using. So the one with the X on it is, is the green outline area there, which is right on the very corner of the APR. The building in the front is, is on the house lot, and it's the commercial, I would call it. Basically, they're both the same without an engineer's drawing. It was just a rough drawing.
Okay. No, I get it, and I see the symmetry between the two of them now, which
Yeah. The land there already is being used for equipment storage and roundbill storage, so it hasn't been in production, agricultural production itself, hay for several years now.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, Ray, they allow you so many buildings, so many square foot buildings, what do they permit to, isn't it? In agriculture, you could
Oh, I have no idea about that. I'm still going to have to go to, if everything gets approved, I'm still going to have to go see Ralph.
Yeah, I think you can put a $4,000.
Yeah, even the other building, even though it was farm-related, I still had to get permits like everybody else.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Good luck.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have a document that needs to be signed that I have to send to M.
Parla.
I got it.
Okay, we're going to send it around the table.
Okay, it just needs one signature. They, either somebody from the Select Board, or administrator, or
We need to scan it in. Can we get it over to you tomorrow?
I can come by and pick it up tomorrow. Who's office?
Carla.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
F on the agenda petition requests to lay out the way known as Stacy Lane and refer the petition to the Planning Boards. This is a normal beginning of a road layout for town, adoption at town meeting, right?
Correct. So it was a subdivision road that was constructed and released by the Planning Board. They submitted a petition to get it accepted. So at this point, the Select Board would just, they choose, would vote to lay out, to lay out the way known as Stacy Lane. They're intent to lay out the way, I should say.
So what is the motion we need?
I'd recommend the board vote to lay, intent to lay out Stacy Lane, and that just starts the process.
And refer to the Planning Board, right?
Right, Planning Board, yes.
I make that a form of motion.
Give me a second there.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just a quick question on that. On the process with that, Jim, does Highway Department have any input as to whether it's going to increase their, you know, if we continue to add lanes and they don't have the employees to plow and do, you know, road work, how does that work out?
So when we refer to the Planning Board, we send it to Conservation, we send it to Highway, and they will comment on it.
Okay.
There'll be a public hearing with the Select Board at a later date.
All right, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Discussion item, the FY '27 budget discussion.
So this is just very preliminary. We don't have any, we don't have many numbers in. We have our pension assessment, but the majority of numbers at this point are just estimates. I've met with all the departments, talked to the school department. We haven't necessarily met and discussed in detail their budget, but all the other departments on the town side I have met with, reviewed their budgets. Just in general, local receipts for FY '25 came in at 78% of actual. We had estimated about 75, 76, so that's pretty close. FY '26, which is this current year, we estimated local receipts at 83%, a little bit higher than we have the last couple of years, and we anticipate coming in about that number, hopefully a percentage or two lower than the 83%, but pretty close to that. New growth this year, and the assessors mentioned this earlier, is at 627, 473. For budgeting purposes, we normally budget 400,000, so we did get a little buffer in there. there. Of that 627, I believe there's about either $60,000 or $90,000 that was related to one solar farm. So you, you take that one solar project out and then that number comes down a bit more. What happens is when we get new growth, the new growth is calculated based on the tax rate. Because we have such a low tax rate, we get low new growth numbers, like, you know, a town that has $10 or $12 per, per thousand would get 30% more in new growth than we get on a regular basis because our tax rate is so low. Right now, the budgets, after reviewing them with the towns, not recommending or will not be recommending any staff reductions to existing positions. There are some unfilled positions that we would be looking to eliminate or recommend eliminating from the budget. The assessors overlay account, which was in the negatives a few years ago, has been fully funded and is actually in the positive, and we used some of that funding last year to help purchase a fire engine. Free cash was certified at $3.6 million, which was the highest that we've had. That was done for a couple of reasons. I believe this year with FY '26, we should be closer to $2.5 million. I don't think we'll see the 3.6 again. We're getting a little bit more conservative on our estimates, our local receipt estimates, and our budgeting as well. Just the revenue trends, so last year, we're concerned about the excise tax, which is the majority of our local receipts. It's about 44, 45% of our local receipts. So if that goes down, that really does a number on, on budgeting. There was a 5% decrease from 23 to 24, but 24 to 25, that bumped up 13%. There was 13% increase, so that's, that's a positive thing. Meals tax has leveled off. Not seeing a big increase in that anymore, but it is not decreasing. It's still a slow increase. The room tax, last year, town meeting approved an increase from 4 to 6%. That 6%, the additional 2% came effective, or will be effective, January 1st. So we should realize about $100,000 in new revenue this year. Next year, we should realize $200,000 in new revenue. For budgeting purposes, state aid, estimated an increase of about 1%. We're hoping as we move through the process that we get closer to 2%, but we're not going to get a whole lot more than that. Expenses, salaries, contractual raises, you know, we had a few years there where we were going 2%, 2%, 2%, now we're getting closer to 4% a year, so that is taxing the budget as well. Department expenses, when we sent the budgets out to the departments, we asked for level funded, essentially level service budgets, just including in salaries, the contracted raises for the employees, the expenses, we've pretty much leveled off. There were some departments that had justification for increases in their line accounts, and you could go back, we, I think we have like 15 years worth of data now that we can go back and see how their expenses are trending. Pension, health insurance, last year, for '25, I think we had $500,000 in turnover from the health insurance account. We ate into that for FY '26, so we won't see that amount. We're still hoping for surplus of, you know, $150,000 to $200,000, but as we move into next year, all the health insurance plans across the state, across the country are going up quite a bit. We were able to buy down our insurance last year, so we have a group insurance with seven or eight other communities, and we used some of our investments to buy down that percentage increase, which was good for last year, but that's like using free cash for your operating budget, right? It's going to catch up to us, so I, I think we're going to see a 10 to 15% increase over last year. Property insurance, they're saying will increase, I have budgeted roughly 10% in there now, hoping that'll go down a little bit. State assessments, we have a 4% increase. That's mainly school choice, charter schools, and then there's some other minor assessments that they charge us. So when the budgets came in from the towns, we were in the negative $450,000 after meeting with the departments and kind of cutting back as much as we could. Right now, we have a balanced budget on the town side, which includes revenues for the school, but I'll get to that in a minute. In order to do that, we had to reduce the OPEC funding from 150 down to 100. The Board of Health had requested a part-time clerk at $27,000. That has been removed, at least in the recommended budget. Highway Department had three vacant positions, we're eliminating one of those. The highway expense, from what they requested and what is in the recommended budget, has been reduced by $27,000. And the police department, their overall budget has been reduced by $110,000. They had actually put in for two additional police officers, which are not included in this budget at this point. Each year, we, we determine how much new revenue we have and we split it, at least going into it with the schools, at 54% for the schools and 46% for the town. Right now, we're looking, we, we take the new revenue and then we have some fixed costs, debt service, pension assessments, health and life insurance, regional and state assessments that we share the deductions with. So we have roughly about $1.7 million of new revenue that would be split between the schools and the towns. So you're looking at about $900,000 for the schools and about $775,000 for the town. I will note that last year, in order to get the school budget where they want it to be or where they need it to be, we had to use $480,000 in free cash. So if we deduct that from the 909, we're down to about $430,000. I know that contractual increases for salaries is up around $700,000, so we're going to have to address that either with free cash, cuts, or hopefully some additional revenue as we get through the budget process. I just want to say, this isn't unexpected. We anticipated this. A few years ago, we looked at revenue projections going forward, and based on those revenue projections, we, we estimated that we could support a yearly increase in new revenue of about $1.4 million, which is roughly about a 3.5% increase. That's slightly less now that we've moved into FY '26 and '27, but it's pretty close to the $1.4 million. Last two years, we were up, because we had a surplus, not a surplus, we had an increase in our, our Chapter 70, which really gave us a, a big bump in FY '25. So you can see that black line goes over the red budget line, but this year, we're down to 1.6, 1.7 million of new revenue. We're hoping as we go through the budget process, we can get up to about 1.8, maybe 1.9, but I don't anticipate much more than that. I think going forward, we still have to, for long-range planning, we still need to look at budgeting and see how we get our new revenues roughly around $1.4, $1.5 million. Couple of things that, you know, the, the Board had asked me what type of feedback I'd be looking for, you know, we still have the engineer position in the budget. Do we eliminate that budget? Do we fund it part-time? The proposed budget, at least at this point, has one new firefighter position. That was also put in there because the fire department is doing some new billing with their ambulance reimbursement, and I don't know all the details of it, but last year, we had anticipated roughly about $50,000 of new revenue, and they're coming in up over $150,000. So those revenues would support an additional firefighter position. It was also in a plan that was developed, geez, I want to say 10, 15 years ago, to get them up to full services, I think gets them the third or fourth firefighter position. I think they were looking for a total of six. You know, the Select Board had mentioned about some media-type position, you know, is that a part-time, full-time position? There are other priorities with the Select Board, and then the Select Board's going to have to give some consideration as to how much free cash, if any, would be used for the operating budget. Those are just some of the basic discussion points. If the Board has any others, I'd be happy to hear. I'm supposed to give you a, a budget, I think, at the next meeting, so, yeah, this will be very preliminary. Our meeting with the town administrator, the new town administrator tomorrow, so I'm sure he'll have some suggestions on the budget going forward. May not see those until January, but there's still time to do that.
All right, thank you. Any comments?
I just had one request. Will you have a copy of this? It's not in the package.
Yeah, it wasn't in the package.
Wasn't it? I didn't see it.
No, I went into...
Oh, it wasn't? Yeah.
I don't see it.
I didn't see it.
Oh, it's under Presentations.
Oh, okay. Then we have it, good.
Any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I mean, just feedback, I know you're asking for some discussion points. Madam Chair, I think you've addressed this as well in the past. I think one of the more important things that the town is lacking a little bit is more of a communication to constituents, the kind of the media position or web interface position. I think that's kind of paramount to make sure that, you know, everything on the website is, is up to date and kind of in that position. So I think that's, in my opinion, more important than the town engineer at $125,000, but I just, I feel that that's a, a position that I think could, everyone could probably benefit from.
I, I agree. I'd rather have, I'd rather have a media position-type person, so a much lower cost, and I think it'd really pay off in the end to just have someone maintaining the website and putting social media presence together for the departments. I just think it's a better use of money.
And if they were pretty versatile, they could create some internship opportunities for college students and maybe even high school students to work, to help execute parts of that media strategy.
Yeah, and I would, it's the information tech...
Not to become spokesperson for the town, but I'm saying that...
Yeah, not, yeah, not a spokesperson communication, but like somebody who can cope, just keep the website up.
Right.
Announcements out, that kind of thing. But did the information technology, have they not asked for any significant changes?
In their budget, the expense account, yes. Right now, we have Keith Novo is on board, and we have a part-time employee that's, has been working out well. So if you go, when we get into the details of the budget, you'll see that the line items like software has gone up quite a bit. It's all cloud-based now, it's yearly renewals, it's not like you buy the, buy the license and then you're good for five or 10 years every year that you...
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
I just feel like we, I feel like we probably need more help in IT, but if they're not asking for it, it's hard to know what to give them.
Madam Chair's brought that up in the past, and I agree, I think, from a security standpoint, as the town continues to transition to doing a more online permitting, licensing, and all that information housed there, my concern, even from the private sector, is I get drilled non-stop with all this IT training and know-before training and all that from a security standpoint. So I think maybe there needs to be some analysis on kind of the IT and, and what the security infrastructure is for keeping the data that we are taking from the constituents and residents as secure as possible.
Well, I just think we're, we're asking too much from one and a half people, right? I mean, in, in corporations, you have infrastructure and cyber is completely separate from your desktop support and your software support and stuff, and, you know, we're, they're doing a bang-up job with what they've got, but I worry a lot about that. We, we had the lightning strike at the police station and, you know, and what if something happened to our IT director? Like, we have a lot of risk there in the IT side, I think.
I think it'd be good to have him come in and...
Present.
Present, I think, so...
Yeah, okay.
It's like what we have over the last couple of years, and I think he, he's had this ongoing, but I wasn't always as comfortable, so he, he's kind of explained in more detail to me, but we do have Meditech, not Meditech, um, oh, jeez, we have a...
We do have a contractor, I forget.
We have a contractor that essentially is his backup as well. So if Keith, you know, went on vacation for six months, we would have somebody that is familiar with the system, that can upkeep the system, that deals with the security issues and the upgrades, so Tech MD, that's for this.
Okay.
All right, anything else? And has CIPC met yet?
Yeah, I was going to talk about that.
Oh, sorry.
We've met quite a bit, and there's a lot going on there.
Okay.
Wait for five more minutes.
Okay.
You're going to blow my bulb.
All right, anything else for Jim? Jim, anything else for us?
Just, I don't have a written town report, a town administrator report, but the HVAC system, as you can see, the heat's working, it's working probably too good right now.
Kind of warm in here, actually.
The heated system is working on each floor, the thermostats aren't hooked up yet, and each room, it's not hooked up in this room, so it's...
Oh.
That's why it's...
That's why it's summerish in here.
It's toast.
So we're going to correct that for the next meeting. So that is moving forward. Like I said, I'm meeting with the new town administrator tomorrow, and I know he does want to meet with the Select Board.
Yeah, he's sent that email.
He's sent it this afternoon.
Yeah, I think that's, that's it. The Chair mentioned the Airbnb application process. I will try to get, pack it to the Board for the next meeting. We did do some preliminary work on that that was sent out, and I will check on that.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of loose ends for him, and that was one, was the, what passed at town meeting was, there's a process for your short-term rentals. Okay, thank you. That was your, your report?
That's it.
Okay, we have the minutes from November 17.
Motion to approve the November 17th meetings. Minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have four in favor and one abstention. Report on the bill warrant?
Yeah, we do have a, a bill warrant. I don't know if it was in the package, but I have it right here, anyway.
This was last Wednesday, I signed it. It was $3.2 million, no issues, it was all done on time. Actually, they had to get this done quickly because of the Thanksgiving long weekend. Anyway, it looks good and doesn't need to be approved, just reporting.
All right, thank you. So next, we have liaison committee reports and suggestion for future agenda discussions. Craig?
I have nothing to report other than what I already extensively reported on earlier.
All right, thank you. Dick?
Speaking of CIPC, yes, we meet, and we've had all the presentations, some of the departments that were now in the, the situation where we go through each of the recommendations. There were many of them totaling a couple of million dollars anyway, and we will, at our next meeting, which is not this week, it's the following week, but we will start to rank them and decide where we want to place our money this year, which is a tough process because all of the recommendations from our management people are all worthy and they're all timely, but they're all costly. So we will start that. Part of the process is to eventually report it to us as Select Board and report the findings of the CIPC to the Finance Committee. So that's well on its way. Council on Aging, I meet there as liaison, and we talked about the increases that we discussed earlier tonight. I'm also the liaison to the Landing Commission, but Jeff Bowles in here last time to discuss the issues there regarding Hickbridge Landing. There's nothing going on, you're probably not losing any sleep over this, but I also serve on the SRTA Advisory Board as a representative from Westport, but that's going along without any issues at the moment. And also, I serve on the Bristol County Commissioners Advisory Committee. We haven't had anything there, but we did approve the budget a few months ago, and that's well spoken for. So those are the things I'm working on, and that's, that's it for now.
All right, thank you. I don't remember what, if it was before the last meeting or not, but we did a meeting of the Bike Walking Path Committee, so I think, I think I might have reported on that last time. They're continuing to work on grants and proposals for the, the change they're doing up there by whites. The Climate Resilience Meeting that was supposed to be a couple of weeks ago was rescheduled, it's about to be happening on Thursday, and then there's a Cable Advisory Meeting coming up, but I forgot the date, so I haven't had it yet. It's coming. Any?
Madam Chair, so how do I go about getting back on my IOC committee?
If there's a vacancy, you can request to be appointed to the...
Has, has somebody been put on my position?